Welcome, everyone. Good evening. This is the school committee meeting returning to regular session. Wow. Getting a stage presence here. Am I loud enough, Mr. McDevitt? All right. Very, I don't think I've ever been told I'm too quiet, but it's always a first time for everything. So I'd like to call us, well, we've already been called to order. I'd like to resume regular session right now at 7:03. All right. So looking at the agenda, we open up with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as our own.
Right. At this time, I'd like to invite anyone who would like to make public comment. Seeing none, hearing none. Thank you. We'll move on to the next item, which is recognition. North Andover Public Schools Department of Nutrition.
All right. So tonight's recognition is presented to the, our Department of Nutrition, our food service workers who did a great job providing meals and grab-and-go lunches during the recent devastating storm. So I'd like to have them all come up, and we'll call them by name when they're up here. But if I could get everyone up here, I'd like, we'd like to present you with this plaque. It says, "North Andover Public Schools Recognition, presented to the Director of Nutrition, Erica Murphy, and the Food Services Staff. In recognition of your exceptional dedication and unwavering commitment to serving our community during a time of crisis, your remarkable efforts in providing food to those seeking shelter during the recent storm on September 8, 2023 exemplify the true spirit of Raze, especially the S for Service. On behalf of the school committee and the entire district, we'd like to express our deepest gratitude. Thank you so much." A small token of appreciation, I'd like to have Carissa Severino come up. Pam. Is Pam here? Pam. How do I say your last name? Tammy Lanas. Anna? Anna Alaberty. Bartola Javier. Karen. Karen Correnti. Dana Brown. Heidi Hood. And Holly Cognlano. Oh, Holly couldn't make it. Okay. So again, you guys provided food to our most vulnerable populations, and not only the students, but the grab-and-go lunches distributed to the library, and on Monday at Woodridge Homes, along with frozen meals for the families for later in the day. And thank you. So can we get a picture, Jim, with all of them?
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Awesome work. All right. Thank you, Dr. Gilligan. So let's move on to the consent agenda. We have approval of the minutes from last meeting.
I'll move that we approve the minutes from the September 7, 2003 meeting as presented in the packet.
Second, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. It's approved. All right. Next, the fun part of the meeting, the student representatives' report. So we recognize Ben, Christiana, and Harper.
Hello. My name is Ben. I'm a senior at the high school to start a report. Spanish exchange ended yesterday. We had 15 students from Granada, Spain, shadow, 15 of our students from North Andover High School. They attended classes, they visited Boston, and they spent 10 days with an American family. We also have sports. There we go. Sports as well. We have golf today, girls soccer away today, girls volleyball home tomorrow, girls swimming away tomorrow, football away tomorrow, boys soccer is home on Saturday, girls field hockey is away on Saturday, and boys baseball is away on Sunday. College visits are starting up for seniors and juniors. For example, we have a couple, we have Holy Cross, Bucknell, University of the South, University of South Carolina, Dartmouth, and UMass, all attending the high school. And juniors, seniors are able to attend those meetings and learn about the schools and meet the admissions reps for North Andover.
Hi, my name is Cece Choi. So still kind of the beginning of the school year, but everyone's getting back into it. Clubs are finally starting, like the ASA, the GSA, the CDA, and the Engineering Club, just a few examples. And the Club Fair, they're all starting up because the Club Fair is actually going to be September 28th, which for the high school schedule is the day four. Homecoming is also coming up. It's going to be on that Spirit Week, which I believe is from the second, yeah, the second to the sixth of October. And homecoming is going to be on October 6th. And Student Council, we actually are setting up a Shirley Temple Bar this year for the first time, which is really exciting. And Picture Day is tomorrow, Friday, September 22nd.
I'm Harper, and the Drama Guild has just finished their auditions for their annual student-directed production of Shorts Fest. The freshman class board have elections coming up on October 11. And juniors and seniors are currently able to apply for the National Honor Society.
All right. Excellent. Busy, busy, we got a busy month coming up. Did you say baseball is away? It's fall.
Yeah, it was on the, I guess, I guess it doesn't make sense, but it was on the Arbiter Live schedule, so maybe they meant...
Somebody forgot to take something off, probably.
Yeah, it does not make sense. I wonder what they could have meant.
And last question, I'm psyched to hear there's an Engineering Club. Is it new? Has that been around for a while?
It is new. I think it was started last year by, I want to say it was Nino Roshi, who's a senior, and Blanca Schaler, who's a senior. And they work a lot on, they actually work a lot in computer programming. That's what they're doing mostly this year. They have a couple initiatives, which are actually pretty cool. One of them is to kind of teach coding and teach in, I think, Python and a couple, and Java. And those classes are from MIT Beaver Institute, which is like the summer program. Nino was talking to me, which is why I know all this. But it's really interesting because they're just offering almost free coding classes, two days a week after school for any students who want.
Get a jump on, if they're going into a technology program next year, that's a great way to get a jump on it.
Yeah, certainly.
Good. Any other comments? Questions? All right, guys. Thanks a lot. Stick around, of course, if you like, but most likely you probably want to go home and do other stuff like homework. So thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Now we'll move to the superintendent's report. Dr. Gilligan.
Absolutely. First, Dr. Mealy, if you put it up there, Naprin. So what does Naprin stand for? It stands for the North Andover Parent Resource Network. And just a reminder that the North Andover Parent Resource Network, formerly known as the, it used to have a different name, Speaker Series, the North Andover Speaker Series. They have an event coming up September 28th on managing stress. And you can go to our website, you can click on the event. It's a great event. They put on a terrific show. They'll have, this is, I believe, Ally Meeker from the Anne Brad Street will be there to talk about strategies and stress. So really excited about that. They do a great job. Lisa Roberts runs that. So really remarkable, and a good resource for parents. Next up, and we don't have a clip of it tonight, but we're starting a podcast here in North Andover down at NACAM Studios. We're going to shoot for twice a month. Ben Abbott is actually going to be our first guest, and it's going to be called Night Side with a K. Night Side with Dr. Gilligan, and Dr. Mealy is, we're co-hosting it. We did a practice run last Friday, and it was a 41-minute practice run. And we've been debating whether we put it out there because it is just the pilot, you know, it wasn't perfect. Dr. Mealy, any comments on it?
Might not get picked up.
When he says we've been debating, I said we shouldn't. He's not convinced. So that's where it is right now.
You know, when it's world-famously, people will be looking for the pilot. They will.
It's just another opportunity to put something in words, talk about all things North Andover Public Schools. It will have a, it'll have a structure. We'll have a guest with questions. We'll have an opportunity to give information about what's happening. And we're aiming probably for 30 minutes. In the 41-minute podcast, I probably have to cut my answers in half. I think Jim's will write spot on. But we're excited about it, and we'll be sending it out in the newsletter in September, information about it, excuse me, October 1st, the October 1st newsletter. So that's really exciting for us. Dr. Mealy, any comments on the podcast?
No, no. I'm looking forward to doing it.
Yeah. I kind of felt like we'd been together a lot of years when we were doing it.
We have.
Yes, we have. Jim interrupted me in the second sentence, but anyway.
I just wanted him to explain what he had just said.
Yeah.
Because he's assuming that people know. It was like the K to 22, and a lot of people don't, why are we, or pre-K to 22, why are we, what do you mean, 22?
It was excellent. Yeah, I'm moving forward to doing this with you. All right, After Dark. I talked about After Dark last time, Jim. Do you have, can you click on that for me? So I had the good fortune, I went over there to see the swim meet where we beat Andover for the first time in a decade. Swim and dive, huge kudos to them. I don't know how the individuals in swimming stand on that board backwards with 75, 80 people in the room. It's dead silent, like the pressure, I could feel it. But they did a great job. But I had an opportunity to go over to After Dark where our seven kids were in. I just got a few photos, you know, I visited metal fab. They didn't have a helmet big enough for my head, so it, metal fabrication and welding. So they gave me this, you know, kind of face shield that you hold. But it was remarkable. This is one of our kids, and next slide, Jim. You know, they're doing the exploratory, and I don't know, that's probably 1,500 degrees Fahrenheit, working on really cool stuff. That was the first time he had ever used that tool, and it was really excellent. Next slide. More of our kids, and this was over in automotive. All right. Couple guys here. This was also, this was HVAC, so they were over in the HVAC area. These guys were great. This was also automotive. There's, this is, I think it's Zach and Joel from the high school, from North Andover. And that's what they have there is they were working on a small engine. That's a snowblower engine. And so they're in the process of the first two weeks doing exploratory. So they're doing, you know, different things. And, you know, we didn't have anyone in medical assisting or at the time that I visited. So they'll be doing that next week, and then they'll make a decision on, you know, what they want to focus on based on exploratory. But it was really cool to see hands-on, authentic learning that they can use for the rest of their life. So I just wanted to snap a few pictures of that. Next slide, Jim?
That was the last one.
Okay. I just thought I'd give you that update because, again, we had, we had 10 apply, eight get in, seven went, and I guess the other one that didn't get in moved out of town. So really cool. We had a few kinks, like the first couple days of transporting our kids from, in North Andover, from their homes to North Andover High School. But we've worked, we've worked that out, and they were really excited. So we'll keep you posted, and we'll probably have them come here at some point, or maybe we'll go there.
Question on that? So how many total students are there? There's seven from here. How many total in the program, do you know?
Well, the program was started in Lawrence for Lawrence High School students, and it was primarily Lawrence forever. Then a few folks in Andover found out that they had it, and I think that they made some noise around it, and they got in. And it was two students from Andover. And so Brandy Kwong and Methuen and I went over and met with the superintendent and said, this is something we want to do with our kids as well. And so last year, remember, we signed a memorandum. I signed a memorandum for a pilot this year. And, you know, I didn't anticipate in my wildest dreams we'd have seven kids doing this to start. I thought it might be like one or two. And so, you know, I'm not sure of the total from, you know, I think Methuen has quite a few kids, Lawrence has the most, Andover, I think, has three, and we have seven this time.
So is it like a total of somewhere around 25, I think?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
Just curious to see what, like, how. I think it's a little bigger than that because, you know, it looked like there were more students in each of those exploratories than...
I think it's terrific because I've long, I bemoan the fact that, you know, most high schools no longer have shop and, you know, industrial arts, basically. So it's an opportunity for students who want to pursue that to have a chance to do it. It's great.
Can you just remind, is it a yearly admission?
Yeah, so they target sophomores. So Meg Pinkston, our Director of Guidance, did a great job recruiting, and it's for kids going into their junior.
But at one time, like September?
Yeah, yeah.
They start as juniors, and it's a two-year.
So they'll get a North Andover High School diploma, and they're going to also end up with a certification in a trade or a skill. So.
Great stuff.
Yeah. All right. Open houses, we had, you know, we had the high school. On that same night, I was at the pool. After Dark, I went to the high school open house. It was terrific. Now, the parents who did really well, brought the schedules, they knew where they were going. But I'd say there was about 100 parents that needed assistance. I was only popping in, but I ended up being there about an hour and a half as a former high school vice principal. I told them they had to get out of the halls where they're going. They didn't know. They were getting nervous. How are they going to get up to 352 and then back down to art? But between myself, Mr. Jackson, the high school administrative team, and Mr. Nugent, Mr. Nugent printed the schedules, and then I gave the directions. And that was terrific. Last night, we had five open houses, all elementary. Next week's the Brad Street, and I'm pretty sure the middle school already took place, or at least some of the grades. So great turnout. I drove by last night, the Kittredge. I've never seen so many cars in my life parked all the way down this street here. So that's happening, and we're excited about that. And last but not least, I've been, I had a chance to talk to Ben Abbott yesterday for a while, our rep. And he really lives that service tied in with Project 351. It's really inspiring. And that got me thinking, talking to him, and thinking about what he does. Like, a couple weeks ago, though, I was thinking, you know, right after the storm, our food service workers, right, like, they're essential to what we do every day. And so the other folks that are really essential to what we do is our custodians. So we'll be promoting it on October 2nd. I didn't even know we had a national school custodian day, but that's what it is in Massachusetts. The Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley, is really pushing it. And, you know, we're excited, we'll be celebrating our custodians. They are really the unsung heroes of this system. And they're more than just custodians. They, you know, get to know kids well. And they're really part of our culture. And I'm excited to be able to celebrate them as well.
Do you know if any of the schools have anything planned, or?
Um, yeah, I'm sure they will. They usually do on the different days. So absolutely. So we'll be doing something, sending them something. But they certainly, I'm sure they will because, you know, for example, the elementary schools, there's only one day custodian. So it's, it's something I'm going to let the principals know as well. We'll send it out. Usually I'll send something on Friday, so I'll be sending this out to them on Friday so they know.
We did talk about that a little bit over the summer, at the summer meeting, right, the retreat, about how important custodians are in the whole scheme of things.
Yeah, huge. You know, a lot of school, a lot of school districts, not so much locally, but I've seen in Massachusetts, they privatized, to want the people that, like companies that came in, they didn't last because our custodians are really ingrained in the culture. You know, Todd Workman, we celebrated him from the middle school this year for his 30th year. And, you know, there was one year, the yearbook at the high school when he used to work there was dedicated to him. You know, he, it was his year because of the relationships in which he developed with students, you know, and he participated in his free time reading a book with the AP History class. He read All Souls, you know. So they really get in and do it, and they do a great job. I mean, you walk around our schools, Jim will tell you, from the industry standard, you know, we don't have what the industry standard would be, and they do a remarkable job of what we have. And I think last time we were here, it was an example of, you know, the work at Atkinson, you know, with John Mullen and his team, Doug Spate. So Custodian Day. And I think that was all I had there.
Last item.
That's it.
Any other questions or comments on that? I'll shout out to them for, I think that you were just referring to it, all the work they did after the storm. Amazing, amazing. All right. Next item, Chair's Report. So breaking news, the Fall Festival is postponed. Just got an email like an hour ago about that. So I guess we don't have to worry about exactly how we're going to cover it. However, it probably will be rescheduled, I would imagine. They were sending out an email that I received. It was asking for opinions on whether they could do it. I think it was October 7th. I don't know what will happen. So we may have to do another doodle poll to see about covering it that day.
Bless you.
Thank you. But, you know, I'll circulate that if it happens.
And October 7th, I think, is also the Nights on the Run.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to say, the Nights on the Run.
Yeah, and the holiday weekend.
That's, I knew I had something that I'd have.
Okay, but back to the, I guess we're back to the superintendent's report.
No, no, you can take it in the chair.
All right, Chair's Report. So Nights on the Run is coming up. It's Saturday, October 7th. It's done by the NAA, North Andover Athletic Association, which I am a member of. And it's, you know, it's a major fundraiser for them, and they do provide a lot of terrific support financially to, to, to the high school athletic programs. So encourage everybody to participate however you can. There's a, there's a, you can walk the course, you know.
You can, I have. And I think the elementary schools have a little ongoing competition.
They do, they do. I can talk about that. The, the elementary schools for many years now, well, so first of all, the track coach, I forget his name, but the track coach from Merrimack College comes and runs the kids' race, which happens first. And he's phenomenal, right? He gets them all excited, and he gets them going, and, you know, they stretch, they warm up. He brings, he usually brings a bunch of his track athletes from Merrimack over in the uniforms to kind of get the kids excited, and then they do a course around the, around the stadium and the side field. And so that's, that's, that's the precursor. That's kind of the first part, and then the actual race is after that. So I encourage people to attend, better yet, to run. And do you want to add anything about that?
I think you covered that. I think you got it.
Yep, all right. But it probably would be a bad day for them to have the Fall Festival in light of that. Yeah, but I don't know. I'm pretty sure the, well, if nothing else, I'll, I'll email them and let them, remind them of that conflict. So we'll see. Okay, so that's that. The Hall of Fame induction and celebrating teachers' night coming up Wednesday, October 25th. Mr. McDevitt, do you want to comment further about that?
No, just, I mean, super brief. I mean, it's, it's a great day to celebrate, you know, the teachers who've completed their third year and their professional teacher status. I have, I saw an article in the paper, I think it was middle of last week, I don't remember exactly which date, talking about the Educator Hall of Fame. And I have spoke, I left a message with Judy. I'm going to try to connect with her, and I think we're going to go by and just hand-deliver a flyer to Mr. Reynolds's home and see if his wife will be able to come as well. So Mr. Landry, the Director of HR, and I have been talking about just that and a little bit of the ceremony. So it's a great night. I think it's usually 6:00 or 6:30.
Yeah, we don't have the time on here, but I believe it's 6:00 or 6:30.
Okay. And it's at the library, and it's just, it usually has been in the... It's been at the library in the past, right?
It was in the high school auditorium.
So we've done it?
Oh, that's right. Last year was a high school, we...
We moved it during COVID times. We did, we did actually a video, I think, one year, just instead. So, well, I'll find out. I know Mr. Landry was working on a location. I just don't know off the top of my head. I thought it was at the library again, Mr. McDevitt, like you.
Oh, okay.
In the rotunda, but I'll find, we'll find out.
It may be based on the number of teachers.
Yeah.
Because the rotunda was actually really nice. It was, it was a great, great venue for it. The auditorium would be perfect as well. I don't remember if Mr. Landry said anything about it. So that was it.
All right. Thanks. Looking forward to that. So then next, we have the middle school groundbreaking. So, Mr. Hicks?
Yes, and I'm going to go right into the building committee update as well.
All right.
Mr. Brown. We have our groundbreaking coming up on Tuesday, October 3rd at 4:30. It will be at the middle school on Main Street in the construction zone. They'll have some dirt for us to move and to shovel. Dr. Gilligan, we will work on having an appropriate size helmet for you.
Thank you.
To keep you safe.
I take a regular size one.
Yeah, we sent out invitations to all the, all the peoples, and the community is also welcome to join us that afternoon. We have a building committee meeting this coming Tuesday in the library at 4 o'clock, as well as the following Tuesday, which is the 3rd, in the library at the middle school at 4 o'clock. Those are open to the public if you, if you'd like to come. In general, construction is happening. They are, the fences are up, and they fell, and they put them back up quickly to make sure it stays safe. Thank you to the contractor for doing that after the storm. But I know recess has been relocated already from outside the cafeteria to the front, much to my own kids' chagrin that they have to be out there, but they're happy to have recess anyway. But things are going well. We have, we have to talk about drainage pipes on Tuesday and make sure that they are appropriate size for the new wall and road that's being built.
Excellent. Any other comments on that?
I'd just say, really, I want to just point out the work Jim's done in terms of traffic. Even on the first day of kindergarten, I went at, you know, 8, so it's 8:35 would be the late bell, and there was no, there were no cars, you know, from the dumpster back around, which was remarkable. And I think a lot of it had to do with the video Jim did with Lucy, along with, George did a video as well. Like, getting all that information out really made a difference. And Jim's been high-tailing it over there every day to do traffic. And I think it might, you might be stopping that soon.
I did.
Okay.
Yeah. It was going well. Hope that continues. So.
Nice job.
Fantastic. That's it?
That's it.
All right. Great. Let's talk then about, so we're all down now on 9B Kittredge project. I did, by the way, get an email, I get copied now in the emails about back and forth on, on the communication with the MAS, acronym is...
MSBA.
Yeah, that's it. MSVA. Yeah, acronym is escaping me. So that's good. I think I counted 13 bidders.
For the OPM, for the owner's project manager. We got 13 to middles, which is a very good number.
Yeah. So do you want to say anything?
I don't think there's anything else. I don't, I don't know what the selection point is at that point.
Right. We've got a week to assess them and narrow it down to maybe the ones we want to interview. So we follow their process, and that's the first step. So over the next few weeks, we'll be selecting a firm to be our owner's project manager, and we'll announce that when it happens.
So that's moving along just like it should.
Exactly as it should.
Yep. Fantastic. Okay. Wow. This is like, flying. All right. Next. Wait. That was nine, so 10. Old Business, we have a second reading and vote on overnight student trips.
Mr. Chair? Yes. So at this time, I'd like to welcome Ms. Pam Lathrop, our Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning here. She, if you have any questions, I know that you had a chance to go over them last time. So this is the second read where you'll vote, and we'll anticipate, I think there might be one or two more trips that we'll be bringing to the next school committee meeting as well.
I'm happy to be here. I'm sorry I missed the last meeting. There were four questions that came my way. I did send that to you, so I'm happy to, you know, answer anything else. But if that, you know, someone asked about some updated agendas or itineraries, we were able to provide that for you for the trip, the DECA trip to Austin, and then also the American Thought trip. The Global trip, they canceled their trip. There were too many conflicts with some of the students and some of the teachers, so they're going to look to reschedule that. And then someone asked about the Granada trip in April, and if, because it hadn't been voted on yet, if students had already paid their first payment. And they did pay their first payment, and then from that, they made a schedule to pay the rest of their payments. But if for some reason the trip was canceled or you didn't approve it, they would... But if for some reason the trip was canceled or you didn't approve it, they would get their money back.
There any other questions? I have a couple, but they were, they're more general, as opposed to the specifics of the individual trips. So, I'm just not familiar with L-Y-L-E-F. So, basically what my question comes from is if a student really wants to do one of these things and they can't afford it, what's the mechanism that they can go through to be able to join it?
All of the trips have some mechanism to be able to join, either through some fundraising that the clubs are doing or that the group is doing, or through that organization, through the funding, there is an opportunity to apply for scholarships.
Okay, and that applies to every?
Every one of the trips.
Okay.
And L-L-E-F stands for Live Your Learn, Live Your Learning Foundation.
Oh, that's what it is, okay. Okay. But other than that, students pay, right?
Correct.
If they're, okay. So, it's not a budget issue for us?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments on that? All right. So, we should vote. So, I would entertain a motion on that?
So, I assume we're going to vote on all of them at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. So, I will, sorry. I will move that we approve, it's on the back of this page, the student overnight trips as presented in the packet.
Second.
We have motion seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, I'll take a vote. Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, it's approved, congratulations. Okay. Before we get to new business, I neglected to mention a couple of things in my report that I just noticed I had written here just to, these are informational. So, if no one objects, I'd like to tell them. So, we're going, this is sort of, sort of coming up things. Mr. McGravy is, wants to come and present at a future meeting, our student-led civics, his student-led civics projects from last year that we wanted to present to us and we never were able to get it on the agenda, I guess.
He requested it like the last day of, like the day of our last meeting. So, I had said it's probably best to do it.
Next year.
In the fall.
So, now it's next year, so he's reached out to me and I've said, I've welcomed that. And so, I'm sure we'll get it on an upcoming agenda. Again, informational, I'll be asking, oh, it's getting loud. I'll be asking about getting a, oh, the CPAC meeting in September was canceled, didn't happen. So, there's meetings, as far as I know, scheduled, three more dates so far, 10, 16, 11, 6, 12, 5.
10, 2, please, just added a meeting, October 2nd.
All right, thank you.
October 2nd and 16th?
2nd and 16th, yeah, the two meetings in October.
October 2nd and 16th, November 6th, December 5th. So, I'll ask, if I can, Michelle to doodle us to figure out who else can go to those, okay? Oh, just FYI, I executed the MOAs for the TAs and Administrative Assistant contracts, so they're fully executed now, both sides. So, those are done, really done. And I'm also planning to ask, to do a poll on when we should hold our community chats. So, now that the Fall Festival is canceled, if it's rescheduled, that would serve as one of them and then we'll need to figure out two other dates, kind of in the middle of this year and in the spring. That's it. Okay, so that, whoever's kind of taking notes, that's amended Chair's Report. Okay, thank you. All right, so now we're on to new business. We have a first read and discussion on School Committee and Superintendent Goals. And I'll turn that over to you, Dr. G.
Great, in your packet, you should have a draft of the goals. You know, I had a good, I had a chance to work with Dave on this and connect with Joe a bit. This is a really important year for North Andover. What I'd like to say about goals is they are required by the Commonwealth and I'm evaluated just like teachers are. Mr. McDevitt, every year says, you know, I think that myself and maybe the town manager, we're the only two people in public that have our performance review done on television. That said, you know, we have a strategic plan, we'll be bringing it back to you guys. It expires in '23 this fall and we are working on that now. We will come back with that probably sometime in December and we're excited about that. The objectives won't change, but some of the initiatives were really accomplished and we've moved on. And what I wanted to say is, these goals tonight are really tied to our overall plan that we've had. And just because something's not on here doesn't mean that we're not doing it. So, you know, for example, to list all the initiatives we're doing to set those goals. So, I really wanted to highlight, you know, student achievement goal, professional practice goal, and these are really important. North Andover is also unique in the sense of, we have some shared goals and you have an individual goal, and that excites me. So, the shared goal with the Superintendent and the School Committee is to collaborate with municipal officials and engage residents to ensure appropriate and adequate educational facilities and funding for Facilities Master Plan 2, to meet the needs of all students. And so, you know, it's really critical with the key actions here and the benchmarks to keep the Middle School project going, as well as meet all the timeline deliverables with the Kittredge School, as well as continue to work and bring in, have some public sessions with the stakeholders so that we can ensure success at future town meetings with all of our Facilities Master Plan 2. As we go to Goal 2, and this is, this is a pretty lofty one. This is, you know, strengthening consistent and rigorous implementation of high-quality instructional materials, particularly at the pre-K through 5 level. And why is this important? This is the year that we're doing implementation of wit and wisdom. You know, we piloted it last year, you know, this is what DESE is having districts do. And in the pilot, I think it was 98% of the teachers jumped on board, which was terrific. Really kudos to them and to the wit and wisdom leaders. And Pam Lathrop has not missed a beat, taking over for Lorene Marks, and she's just as passionate about literacy. But this is high-quality curriculum materials that we're teaching almost 2,000 kids, a lot of them how to read in that, out of that 2,000. So, I'm excited about that. We'll also be weaving in the key actions and benchmarks, some of the professional development that goes along with supporting teachers in these initiatives. And you'll see some other stuff here with our partnership with Boston College and some of the work we're doing with Principles on what to look for and how to support teachers in this critical work. All right, Goal 3, for the, this is a really important one to me. For the 2023, 23, 24 school year, the district will support a district-wide commitment to social justice and equity for all students and staff. The district will continue to create a culture that reflects, respects, and embraces the voices, perspectives, and differences arising from our diverse community. And really, this is a monumental year with all the construction, at the Middle School, the project, all the wit and wisdom implementation. But when we get to this, remember, we drove it and it's really a special thing, the Equity Audit that will be done by the Equity Process headed up by a really respected leader in the Commonwealth that does this, Cindy Bradley Weeks. So, the, you know, we met with her, she met with some of our team early on, and that will get going. And they'll be conducting the Equity Audit, not only with the schools, but in the town as well. So, they'll meet with the police, fire, youth services. And I anticipate we'll get a report sometime after the New Year. And we will be looking then at a three- to five-year plan, planning for the recommendations that come as a result of that. We'll also be conducting a special education review. And we're excited in both to have them tell us, hey, this is where we're doing well, this is where we can improve, celebrate successes, and see the opportunities. Marcy, would you like to say anything about the?
Again, I can say names now because the contract has been signed. So, we have partnered with Urban Collaborative. They are an organization that really started in this state, but have since branched out in a part of Arizona State University. So, I have met with their team. We met as recently as this past Tuesday with Mike Grant in terms of starting the data collection, so starting the data collection piece of it. So, all of that is in process, they've scheduled their onsite days, it looks like November 1st or 2nd, November 1st and 2nd. We have an onsite team and then a background team that will work on the data collection. I'll have obviously a more detailed schedule. We're going to start meeting weekly in terms of their needs from us and our needs from them. So, we're meeting again Friday, next Friday. So, we should have the schedule done by then, so I'll be able to share that information.
Excellent.
Yep, so, and there's other things. I mean, the supporting student voice and the different groups we have across the district, we're really trying to, it's been a struggle with our LPAC, and that's for our English Language Learners. We're really trying to get that up and running this year. I think it took a hard hit with COVID and we really struggled getting folks. But now that we have the parent liaisons, that's a big help and this is something Pam will oversee, Ms. Lathrop. So, we're excited about that. There's a lot of work in here. This is a big part of what we do. And it's about, you know, supporting students to have equal access to an excellent education. And that's what it comes down to. And so, these reviews will be big and we'll go from there. But I'm excited that it's not just the schools for the Equity Audit, I think really as a community. You know, we have kids 180 days, but as a community, we have to work together in a lot of ways, so. And then last but not least, I'm going to turn the last one over. And this one, just to be clear, this one is not part of the Superintendent's evaluation. This is the School Committee Goal and it's a draft and if you want to go, Dave, and talk about it a little bit.
Sure, yeah, and welcome and encourage comments and additions, subtractions, whatever you guys think is appropriate here. We, so, for a starter, we, I put, School Committee to communicate and engage with the community to advocate for the district with residents and town leadership. So, you see the key actions here. We want to make sure we, well, as it says, you know, sustain effective, accurate, meaningful communications, facilitate dialogue, encourage involvement in the programs, and be the community advocates that we're supposed to be. Sharing of information concerning district performance, policy, and budget. You know, help communicate the complex issues, for example, of Facilities Master Plan 2. And, you know, get ourselves out there as much as reasonably possible in the related community councils, organizations, et cetera. Then we have benchmarks against those down at the bottom that are pretty evident, but I'll read a few of them. One thing we're thinking, or I was thinking about is maybe we change the location, not always meet here, possibly meet at the schools themselves. That we clearly participate in public forums as appropriate regarding Facilities Master Plan 2. I'll continue the tradition of providing monthly articles for nightly news.
There is an article due, Dave, October 1st, Cindy Parent does not like tardiness.
Don't miss the due date.
And she has a word limit on you too, so you have to be really concise.
I won't be late. Does the big hammer come down? Yeah, okay. No.
We wouldn't know, you're always on time.
Ah, okay, I will make sure that I'm on time. This one, I think, is pretty important. We've already begun this with the attending, you know, community meetings at different organizations. We've already talked about attending the CPAC meetings. But to the extent we're able, we should cover PTO meetings and school events as well. I mean, this is ambitious, right? We can't, it's going to be a little bit challenging to do all of this, but.
We have a representative usually that attends the PTO, the president's meetings.
Yeah, and we had a meeting last week.
Right.
Yeah, is that, is that you? Okay, all right. So, that's already covered. Okay, just make a note for myself. Attend Board and Committee Meetings such as Select Board and FinCom. And, you know, attend as many community events as we can, like we were going to do with the Fall Festival. I was at the National Night Out, you know, Farmer's Market on Sundays, things like that. Can show ourselves there, I think it's to our benefit. So, so that's what I said. I think it's appropriate to discuss, yes? If you guys have input on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so would anybody like to contribute other thoughts to that particular goal, to our goal, Small Committee Goal? And it's the first re, I'm sorry, it's the first read, so obviously they don't all have to come tonight, they can come in the next two weeks.
And I know you had put a 10-town activities like the Fall Festival, but I think the nexus of attending those was for the purpose of our community chats. So, do we want to set like a goal of community chats or benchmark of what that should look like or how many we should meet throughout the year to make sure that those happen?
Okay, yeah, I like that.
Three.
Three.
Three. Okay, three per year. Add that.
I would just say quickly before, probably 2020, sorry, before 2020, we, I think, once, kind of fall and spring, tried to do a meeting like in one of the schools, we had students who presented, they were, you know, kind of doing some different things with math. We had a meeting, I think at like 9:00 in the morning, you know, at the senior center just to try to, you know, vary, vary those. You know, I can't say attendance changed a ton, but it was great to have the kids be part of those and those are always really fun, so.
All right.
I think we did them earlier, like maybe 5:30, 6:00 or something, because especially the younger kids kind of have to get home and to bed. So, you know, starting at 7:00, 7:30 is not really ideal.
I wonder if we could get it on the cusp of like a Kid Stop timeframe, like if they're already there, just shuffle them in for a quick, I don't know, not all kids go to Kid Stop, but just if there are, if there, maybe there's a chance that that would work out.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I'll modify the first benchmark and kind of capture that. All right, any other immediate feedback?
If you have any feedback on any of the other goals, you can send it to Michelle and we'll.
And to me.
And to Dave.
Yeah, and we have until like, whenever the agenda is set for next time, so roughly two weeks. If people think of things in between now and then that want to add, we welcome that. All right, so that's the first read of all of that. Now, I think I want to open it up for questions to Dr. Gillian on the first three. And I have one, which is, can you define, I'm sure you can. There were some acronyms in here I didn't know.
Which number are you looking at?
I'm looking at number 3, towards the bottom. What does ELPAC stand for and what is IDIOMA?
So, IDIOMA is a program that students use in terms of, that we've used, that we're going to use, it's new. I'm going to, I can have Pam talk about it. The LPAC stands for what I talked about when I was going over this. It's the EL.
Oh, English Learners?
English Learners PAC. And we're excited to get that going.
Okay.
And IDIOMA is actually a company that we're partnering with, with community programs to bring, to do some parent training of our L parents so that they can learn the language of school, so they can participate in the experiences in their child's school.
I don't know what IDIOMA stands for, if that's just, that could just be the name.
It's the name.
And I think it was started by a former North Andover Public School teacher a long time ago.
Melissa Wallace.
Melissa Wallace, yeah. Okay. She left teaching to start a company, probably over a decade ago at least.
She has worked with North Andover for the Seal of Bilinguality as well.
Oh, okay.
What's the Seal of Bilinguality? We had 33, 33 people on the diploma last year.
Fantastic.
So, that's that.
Okay, I couldn't, I couldn't quite hear that, can you say the last part again?
Melissa Wallace, the IDIOMA worked with North Andover for the, creating the, so students could access the test for the Seal of Bilinguality.
For the, oh, okay.
Seal of Bilinguality, so that they, yes.
Oh, okay. And what they're doing is training the parents to understand how the schools work, how they can like check.
That's what we're doing this year. So, it is a, so I think we have like eight workshops planned and really it's to help parents understand school language. So, how would you write an email if you wanted to ask a teacher something? How do you call into the school nurse if you have a question, if you have a question, if you want to report your student's sick? Lots of times, parents who are not native English speakers, we have a lot of sayings that they just don't understand. You know, no worries or, you know, call the chat line and things like that. So, it's really to help them understand school language so they feel comfortable participating in the activities in the school.
And would that include like training them on Power School, which would be important for them to?
We can do that, yep.
Because I would think if you're not a native English speaker, that might be pretty challenging.
Yes, it could be. Lots of times, technology really is their friend, they do. Yes, it could be, lots of times, technology really is their friend, they do, you know, lots of times they may use, they feel more comfortable, but we certainly could train them on Power Schools or what, how to fill out things for field trip, it's really like going through lots of the forms so that they, the goal is that all students, all parents feel that they are welcomed in their child, child's school, and that they can participate in school activities, and sometimes because they don't understand or they don't feel as though they have enough language, they are shy about coming to events.
All right, thanks, anyone else have any questions or immediate feedback for superintendent or assistant superintendent?
Yeah, small thing, Dr. Gilligan, on the goal number three with facing history in our cells, I, you, in what capacity is the, that organization going to be used? In the past, it was training for a teacher, is it being a student use now, in what grades and what classrooms? I mean, it's an amazing organization, does really great work, I just like to make sure we capture that.
Yeah, so we've been using them to really build capacity with staff, and, you know, it's been really an eye-opening process for them, and so we're, we're gonna continue with them in terms of some projects with, with our staff and students.
Middle school, high school?
Six through 12.
Good.
Yep.
Oh, and we have a fifth grade pilot program.
Awesome.
So, it's been a great organization, and it's, you know, I've attended, so it's, it's quite a bit, but they're excellent, and I think it's really a benefit to North Andover, I think this might be year three.
Great, thank you.
Yep. All right, any other immediate feedback? All right, so we will be voting on those next time. Okay, to my agenda. All right, so that is new business, oh, no, it's not, we have another item. First read and discussion, letter in support of rural school districts, so in your packet, Sisson brought this to my attention, and so, let me just, you guys can read it, but I'll read the, what this is all about. So, "An organization of rural school representatives recommend, is recommending that school committees like us send letters of support for our House and Senate bill that are currently before the Joint Committee on Education, and the draft letter of support is attached, it has a little bit of background information on the group. So I've reached out actually to our state reps to get their opinions on this, which I'm still getting back. It's pretty, I, I took a look at these bills myself, and there, there, there's a lot in them, I think the spirit, this is my opinion now, I think the spirit's good, I, what I don't know is what their impact would be on us as a district. And so that's the one item I think we all need to sort of research for ourselves and figure out if we, if we're concerned about that, that it might impact us in a, obviously in a negative way, if it impacts us in a positive way, that's great. So, you know, I, I guess, hmm, a question on procedure, if anybody knows, like, can I share feedback I get from our legislators, or do we all have to do that individually?
I think if you get a response, you can forward it in a blind CC.
To the members?
And it's not any conversation or communication going back, you are kind of one-way sharing, this is the information that I got.
From a state rep or whatever.
Correct.
All right, so should I get that, I will do that?
If you get that, then that'd be great to pass along, and if it's appropriate, it might be in the packet.
Okay, okay, I mean, I, yeah, I'm just offering my opinion is that, that, you know, on the surface, the goals certainly seem worthy, right? That, that a lot of our, a lot of the districts in the state are struggling, right, because they have low population density, and they still have the cost of operating buildings and things like that, so they're essentially asking for a little more help from the state. Obviously, the question comes from, well, does it, does it, that, does that mean that other districts would lose some of their state support? Obviously, they wouldn't want to vote for that, so, anyway, I suggest we take a look at it and decide for next time whether we want to send this, send this letter.
Is there a timeframe that they're looking to have this received by, should we decide to move forward with it?
Um, I, you know, I don't.
It says October 6th on it.
I didn't know if that was like a deadline for anything.
That would be the date after our next meeting, so, I think the assumption might be that if we were to vote on it, the letter is ready to go.
Yeah.
Do we have to?
But then that still doesn't answer the question of when they have a deadline, sorry, I didn't.
I looked at, so this, does this reference the website, the, the organization? So the sponsors of this?
I think there's the link on the website to reach to it.
Yeah, so you can, you can peruse that website and see, I don't recall seeing a specific date, and I can share one informally, one of the state reps told me that she hadn't even had the chance to look at this yet, so, so I don't think it's super urgent in terms of timing.
There's no rule that says if we had a first read today, we have to have a second read next, meaning we can put that on a other, another subsequent agenda, correct?
You can table it.
You can.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't have to put it on a second read, but if you bring it back, let's say in December, we, we technically have had a first read.
There's a lot to it, I think if folks get a chance to look it over, if you have any questions, you can send them to Dave, and Dave, we can, I, I can help you, we can find out if there, if there really is, what's the deadline?
Okay.
Is there a way to find out other districts that they're inquiring for support? Are they just sending it to all Massachusetts districts?
Yeah, what, based on what I saw when I went on that website, they're sending it to school committees, everywhere, across the state, yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot like the letter of support you, the school committee's done in the past, to support different things that the MASC is looking for to advocate with the legislature, and talking about it with Dave, he, he really gave me some information on it, and I said, you know, there are a lot of districts out in Western Mass struggle with their budgets, I said, you know, as a superintendent standpoint, you know, I'd be supportive of it, but at the same time, as long as it's not taking money away from North Andover, because we need it, but.
So has the MASC come out with any type of statement or position on this?
Not that I could find, I, I started looking for that, exactly, there's definitely, you know, a section on the MASC website that talks about legislative support and things that they're working on, I couldn't find this specific on there. But I, I've only taken a quick, a quick look, I didn't really, I wouldn't say I've done a thorough job of going through the whole website to see if I could find anything, it wasn't obvious though, I searched within the website, and then it searched rural schools, nothing came up, so. I could reach out to them.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna add, a lot of times when things like this have come up, I've reached out, typically I reach out to like Glenn or Tracy, and you've probably gotten emails or, or seen them, and just, you know, said, you know, can you point me in the right direction of, of the document? And sometimes it's just on the webpage, but it's not in a place where you might automatically find it, so they'll send you the right link or tell you, we, we have no opinion, we're, we're not giving an opinion on it, so, but yeah.
I think the chair wanted to get this on, just, he'll get more information to you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to MASC in that fashion and see if they, they have a position, that's a good question, and I'd like to know the answer to that too. All right, any, any further discussion on, on that? Okay, if not, that's, we're done with new business, unless anyone else has any? Okay, now, open up for public comment?
I just want to say, so we, there was a Thompson parent who painted some murals on the Thompson Blacktop, and if you get a chance, go over there and take a look at them, because they are pretty dang cool.
On, on the ground?
Yes, yes.
Do you know who painted them?
The name is escaping me at the moment.
Is it out on the playground?
Yes.
Oh, that's exciting, there used to be a guy that did the country and he'd have to repaint it, the United States.
Yeah, so the, the US, and I've seen the kids out there with, with a chalk labeling all the states, they've got some really fun four-square, they did the basketball courts, it's, it's really cute.
Do you know who did it? No? Okay, we'll find out.
They, they did a really nice job, and the kids are so excited about it.
You know, the US, the US painting on the, on the Blacktop there, I, I remember that from 20 years ago, that that was, that was there. That was a big attraction for my kids when they were little.
I'd be out there every day when I was.
All right, any, any other quick, oh, I'm sorry, we're moving on to public comment, I don't see anybody here, so I don't think we have any. And then any other brief comments before we close? Thanks for that, Melissa, all right, well, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, what do you say about that, Mr. Hicks?
I think it went to Ms., Ms. Petrowski.
Oh.
I think she got the second in, but I'll vote yes.
Okay, thank, I'll take the vote, so, Ms. Petrowski, second, thank you.
I'll vote yes.
Uh, Mr. McDevitt votes yes, Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Brown says yes, we are adjourned, thank you.